All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees, matters made confidential under federal law FERPA and collective negotiations under the Taylor Law for YAS, YCTCTAs, and the substitutes.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the mother of Janine Mussolini, the father of Melissa Danko, the father-in-law of Krista Green, and the grandmother of Melissa Walsh, and the sister-in-law of Tom Dunning's.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, limited, just for all.
Thank you. We are going to start with our first public comment period. Before we start, it's on agenda-related items. I am just going to read our standard public comment session. Our first public comment period is fifteen minutes in length. Each person has the opportunity to speak to up to three minutes. We will not be extending the first period. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns or questions tonight. Speakers were asked to sign up on the appropriate sign-up sheet with their full name, address, and email. If your name is not legible, you will not be called upon. Our policy twelve thirty, public participation at board meetings, clearly states that we do not allow the discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect to the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or other disruptions from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute speaking time, we will turn the microphone off. Thank you. It's not directed at any one special person. We read this all the time. So I'm going to go to the first person who signed up, which is Janet Goodman. Please state your name when you come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janet Goodman. Can you hear me? Thank you to our Board of Education and Dr. Hatter for allowing me to speak. I'm coming to you with a concern about the class sizes for the students in the class of two thousand and thirty-four Brookside's current second graders. Last year, my daughter was in a general education first grade class with twenty-five students. This year, in her second-grade ICT class, she started the year with twenty-five students, and she currently has twenty-seven students and five adults in her small classroom, thirty-two bodies working in one room. This is not competitive with nearby districts, many of which pay lower taxes than we do. From what was explained to me last week, there is no solution to help this class better finish the remaining three months of this school year. I was told there will be two ICT classes for this cohort next year, which will hopefully prevent this from happening again. However, class sizes will remain high, starting at twenty-four students per class with five sections. From my own calculations, most classes will start higher than twenty-four students. We would like another section to be open to lessen the class size to about twenty students per class with six sections. This would better match the class sizes at Mohansick and the rest of Brookside. I'm here tonight with several parents of second graders with the same concerns. Many of us, myself included, have even younger children who will be starting at Brookside in the fall. We're nervous about these class sizes continuing for all of our children. I am also a second-grade teacher in the Henchuk-Hudson School District, where there are nineteen to twenty students per class in second grade, with ICT having the lowest rosters, since it's more likely for them to gain than to lose students. It is written in my teacher contract that the desirable number of pupils per class in the elementary schools is twenty students for grade one and twenty-two students for grades two and three. If they go over these limits, there are given actions that they will take, that will take place, one of which includes utilizing a teacher aide. In the seven years I've worked there as a second-grade teacher, this has never been needed because class sizes have remained at or below twenty students. The Lakeland Central Schools or Strick's Teachers Contract has a similar consideration in terms of class sizes, with an optimum range of first and second graders being thirteen to nineteen students. The contract states that every effort shall be made to place classes in the optimum range. With the population growing in Yorktown and new developments being built within the Brookside School area, we're deeply concerned with how the schools, specifically Brookside, will manage more students. The new construction on the buildings will possibly help at some point, but we feel that it's important that we protect our students and teachers now by limiting class sizes and stating this within the teacher's contract. If the current building does not have the space to support smaller class sizes, I ask the Board of Education to consider bringing in modular classrooms to temporarily fix the issue. I ask that teaching assistance be utilized in classrooms that exceed optimum class sizes. The first few years of elementary school are the foundation for students, which will impact the remaining years within the school system. It is a critical time in their education where we need to prioritize optimal learning environments, and having smaller class sizes is key. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Kristen Reeves?
Hi, Kristen Rivas. I am also here to express my concern regarding the current large class sizes in second grade at Brookside Elementary School. As a parent, teacher, and an advocate for quality education, I believe it is crucial to address the issue promptly to benefit our children's learning. My daughter has had a wonderful experience at Brookside so far, with amazing teachers and staff. We are lucky that she has had such dedicated teachers to make her experience so positive. However, I have noticed that since she was in first grade, her class size was higher than optimal. Twenty-five students in both her first grade and second grade classes is concerning when there is only one teacher. In these crucial years where the children are learning the foundations of reading, writing, and math, teachers may find it challenging to provide individual attention, address the diverse needs of students, and maintain an optimal learning environment with that many students. As a third-grade ICT classroom teacher in a local district with twenty students in my class, I find it very concerning to hear that the ICT class in Brookside's second grade has twenty-seven students in it. This must make it very challenging to ensure that all students receive the attention and support that they need to thrive. I have been teaching in a local elementary school for fifteen years, and I have never had over twenty-three students in a class. Even though our contract allows for the numbers to go slightly higher, our administration has always made the necessary adjustments to ensure manageable class sizes. As this cohort moves into third grade, where the curriculum gets increasingly demanding, and there are New York State assessments being administered, smaller class sizes would be more conducive to learning. If they remain at five sections, they will be starting the year off with high class sizes, only to be added to with new entrants from the building projects within town. I understand that managing class sizes can be complex, especially with limited resources and increasing enrollment. However, I urge the school administration to explore potential solutions to change this issue. I believe there are many options that can help fix the burden of large class sizes that the community will support. Additionally, I am more than willing to volunteer or assist in any capacity to support efforts aimed at reducing class sizes in the elementary grades. My husband and I moved to Yorktown for the schools, despite the fact that our taxes would be higher than surrounding districts in northern Westchester or Putnam. We knew that the Yorktown schools had an excellent reputation for high academic standards. I know I am not the only parent concerned about these current class sizes, and would ask for the board to begin a conversation on capping classes at a lower size. This is not only for my daughter, but for every Yorktown student, current and future, to have the best opportunity for education. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ron, did you want to address this now, or do you want to address it during your update?
No, I, the points are well-stated and well-made, and I think it'll be addressed in the presentation that I'm delivering this evening.
Okay, then we'll just move on to the superintendent's update.
Here I am, right back. So I'll begin with the budget addendum presentation. So when we last met prior to the spring recess, I had shared with the board my final budget presentation with the recommendations that I was making. Since then, and between then and when the board has anticipated to adopt the budget on April fifteenth, I wanted to provide you with an update. We were still waiting, and we still are waiting, on final state aid numbers to arrive. We were anticipating that would come to us on April first. That hasn't been the case. But regardless, so the board can fully consider the budget that I've proposed, I wanted to provide you with an updated presentation. So I will make my way to the podium to deliver that presentation. So the original, the original budget presentation that I delivered at the end of March, March twenty-fifth, I believe it was, is posted in board docs for public review. Not much in this addendum has changed from that original budget presentation that I shared with the board. What I did in this update or addendum is reduce some of the slides and provide you with updates in areas that are important to be updating. It's, the development of a school budget, especially when you don't have final state aid projections, is very fluid. We're in the middle of annual review season, where student needs are still being identified, and course placements and programs are being identified. We don't have state aid numbers, which impacts everything from our pre-K program and our ability to implement and deliver our pre-K program, all the way up to everything else that the state aid revenue impacts. So still a lot of moving parts, but we're going to continue to assess the conditions in real time, on the ground, and make adjustments as we deem appropriate for best interests of our students educationally. So I'll just begin with a reminder to our community, and again, this was in the original presentation, and to our board, forgive me if this is redundant. The process begins in November. It doesn't, it never truly ends because we're constantly assessing the needs of our students and our programs. So although I deliver my final presentation on March twenty-fifth, and between March twenty-fifth and April fifteenth, the board sits with the budget, makes some determinations, and either amends it or adopts it. Between March twenty-fifth and April fifteenth, theoretically, we're getting a state budget. And we're understanding a clearer picture of our state aid allocation. We're understanding so many other revenue streams coming into light. We're seeing various rates be set. As we progress from that time period, March twenty-fifth to April fifteenth, what's also happening are registrations for our kindergarten program. That's ongoing, and that continues to shape our budget development process. Annual review season happens. Students are picking course electives at the high school and selecting their courses. And again, our enrollment, our programs are driven by student enrollment. So at our high school, as we see more interest move toward engineering, for argument's sake, we'll have to expand the number of offerings that we have in that regard, and look at other areas that we can scale back on. At this point, though, everything that we do change has to come from somewhere. So whether it's going to come from state aid, or whether we reprioritizing the elements of our budget, we, at the end of the day, have to land at the numbers that I provided to you, because we are at the maximum tax levy cap. So I anticipate the board will adopt the budget next week at their April fifteenth meeting. There's a budget hearing on the thirteenth, and then finally, the budget vote and trustee election on the twenty-first of May. I shared this image during the original presentation, and it's as true now as it was then, if not even more clear. Students are at the center of all we do. There are some wonderful things, and then there are some routine logistical things in green that surround the child. Whether it's the academic program we offer, the extracurricular programming that we offer, or transportation, something less glamorous, but something that we're required to do, there are so many elements to being a student here in Yorktown. And then the red circle around all of that are the external factors that push into the environment. Whether it's the tax levy cap, that's real. The expiration of federal COVID funds. We invested a lot of those COVID funds into mental health and supporting the mental health needs of our students. We hired psychologists, social workers, other clinicians to support our students as we get through the pandemic and emerge from the pandemic. Those needs are still there. The dollars are not there, but the needs are. So it's, I believe it's imperative for us to find a way to integrate that into our school budgets. ERS and TRS have increased, two hundred and fifty thousand for ERS, two hundred thousand for TRS. Our transportation contract increased. It's the first time we had to go out and bid in quite some time, and that was a four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase. When we look at the health insurance rates, that increased by five percent, or I believe that translates to about six hundred thousand dollars in real dollars. There are so many other factors that are encroaching on the budget, but it's incumbent on us to still deliver a budget that's balancing sensitivity to our taxpayers with the needs of our students. And so one of the updates that I'll provide you with this evening is state aid. We're currently, as of today, we're fifty thousand dollars lighter than where we were this year in state aid. So without an increase, we're fifty thousand dollars less. Without any changes to what we're currently getting, we expect to be fifty thousand dollars less. Now, if the correct formula is applied, and it's not my formula, so whether I agree with the formula or not, if the correct formula is applied for state aid, that fifty thousand dollar decrease would actually be a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar increase. So it's a net swing of about two hundred and thirteen dollars. We're, we expected the numbers by April first. As of April eighth, we don't have numbers. What I am surmising, based on what I'm hearing from the various state organizations through which I communicate, I'm hearing that a hold harmless may be left in place. So maybe that fifty thousand dollars is restored, but I'm not optimistic that the full hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar increase, in addition to that fifty thousand dollars, will be realized. So more to come on that. I would love for you to have those numbers before you actually adopt the budget, but the reality is that that may not be a reality. So that's the first update. I told you on March twenty-fifth that I would report back at our next meeting. As of right now, there is no update on state ed, state aid beyond what I've shared with you. But in building the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, this was one of the more challenging budgets, and we see this all around. We see surrounding districts making very difficult choices when it comes to their budgets and balancing their budgets. And one of the things we've tried to do is be sensitive to our taxpayers while providing the programming and resources and supports to our students and putting those into balance. This year, we're especially pressed on unfunded and underfunded mandates. The decrease in state aid compounds that. And so what we're doing is looking at the existing budget, looking at the dollars available to us with the upcoming levy, and prioritizing what our needs are. And so that results in what I'm going to share with you. First of all, we are looking to keep all of our programs intact. We're not looking to reduce programming. Our students have really thrived in the programming. We're looking to have our class sizes be maintained at or below the board guidelines. There is a incredible investment, although it's a one-point-oh, and it seems de minimis, in orchestra, chorus, and band, I do believe that this hybrid position in, in our music program, specifically the performance music program, will be monumental. And the tentacles of that pyre will result in greater practice time in band, greater practice time and lessons in orchestra, and it'll translate, I'm sorry, in chorus, and it'll translate not just into the elementary schools, but actually all the way up to the high school. So what seemingly is a one-point-oh position creatively has, will be able to impact three schools and multiple grade levels. The FlexPath program at the high school is a really exciting one. That's one we talked about last time. And for anyone at home who is going to be viewing this presentation, each of these items was discussed in greater detail. So the board has heard this already. I want to focus more on the changes for you this evening, as opposed to restating what was discussed at the March twenty-fifth meeting. But certainly, the FlexPath program is an exciting one. It's a therapeutic program that also is an alternative program melded together, and that's honestly the first program of its kind that I'm aware of and that we're aware of. So we're excited to bring this opportunity to our students at the high school. The school psychologist position's an important one. Modified sports. We're looking to add a boys' volleyball team, girls' field hockey, and boys and girls cross-country to our middle school. That's an exciting development for us. The other half of the strength and conditioning coach is something that we're also excited to see. We began that journey last year by implementing a point-five, with the understanding that we would finish out the other point-five for the coming school year. We're looking to make some general education additions. So science, point-six at the middle school, that's a really, really exciting position for us, and I'm really optimistic about, again, it seems de minimis at point-six, but the impact will be monumental. It will allow us to bring an esteam program in engineering down into our middle school even further. It'll allow us to look at artificial intelligence and instruction in that, in that regard. So some really, really new and innovative middle school concepts, being able to offer a course in those areas, which are perfect entry points into our high school program. Also, at the elementary level. Last time, I told you elementary kindergarten, and that kindergarten position was at Brookside. We looked at where the enrollment numbers are trending, and we determined, at least at the March twenty-fifth meeting, that the kindergarten numbers warranted the increase in section at Brookside. Since that time, we have, as I mentioned, continued with our annual review process, looking at student enrollments, looking at enrollments and projections. So two other items I wanted to bring to your attention are second grade at Mohansick, third grade at Brookside for next school year. And again, those additions are based on student enrollment, and even at current enrollment levels, and those are some of the comments that you heard this evening. We're certainly recognizing that, and even prior to those comments, this presentation was prepared. I would, I would strongly advocate for second grade at Mohansick, third grade at Brookside to be considered. We can certainly look at offsetting that, that increased cost with the revenue that we anticipate receiving from state aid. We can look at the fuel contingency, which I think is important, but as the circumstances change, we have to correct course and make sure that we can meet the needs of our students first. So I would ask that we reprioritize, and I'm going to recommend that we reprioritize funds to add those two sections. And also, looking at American Sign Language in our high school, and even at, to some extent, at our middle school, we're seeing a decline in the interest in French. We did a world language survey. We'll be presenting on that to the board. But we, as we see the numbers and interest declining in one area, we're looking for other creative options to offer to our students, and we perpetually do that. So American Sign Language certainly is an exciting opportunity for our district, for our students. Technology infrastructure and devices, we're constantly, just about everything that we operate here in the district is powered by our technology department, whether it's the digital sign, the thousands of devices that are in place, and we're on the iOS platform, we're on the Chrome platform, we're on a PC platform. There are so many different devices that we support, so many different courses that access web-based programming, whether it's a Google Classroom or any other type of online resource. So ensuring that the network infrastructure is continuously being looked at and refined is an important part of our instructional program. Also, looking at our Chromebook, MacBook laptop cycle, and making sure that we're cycling out old equipment, cycling new equipment in for students as they end their, as the devices reach their end of life. Network security is another area that we're going to need to make some strategic investments in. We already have a very robust network security platform. However, the reality is, the technology is evolving in such a way that we need to stay current, because the people who are trying to infiltrate our network security are current, and we need to make sure that we can match the technology with the times. In terms of the impact of the budget, I do want to share that these numbers haven't changed. So despite some of the updates that I provided, the tax rate change in Yorktown, those bottom three numbers are the three numbers that will impact taxpayers directly. In the town of Yorktown, which is the vast majority of our tax base, it's a two-point-zero-seven percent increase that we're, that we're forecasting. The two-point-nine-five percent increase in Newcastle is estimated there, and as is Cortlandt, at zero-point-zero-two percent. I do want to clarify that if the state aid revenue does come in with that, with an increase from where we currently are, so whether we get the fifty thousand dollars back, or we get anything beyond that, and/or we get anything beyond that, that two-point-seven-five budget-to-budget will increase, but it will not impact the tax rate change. So I just wanted to clarify that the budget-to-budget would change, but the levy would stay the same, so there would be some revenue that's offset by some expenditures that we have with regard to the additional sections that are being recommended. But the levy amount, the rate, would not change. We are below the allowable tax levy cap, so I just wanted to make sure that that is clearly communicated to our community. And again, we have a history of delivering responsible budgets to our community. When we look at, certainly, the pre-COVID numbers, so we look at up to the nineteen-twenty school year, there were actually two tax rate decreases in Yorktown, which, which is not common practice, but it's something that we were able to do for our community. It was important to do. As we look at a post-COVID, and honestly, a high inflationary environment, we have kept our increases modest, but we face the same realities that homeowners face. The cost of fuel oil to heat our buildings is high. It's high in our homes, it's high in our school. The cost of many of the commodities that we're putting into our buildings have increased, and that's a reality that schools are not immune from. And so I share that history of fiscal responsibility with you. We shared it at our last meeting, but I thought it was important to reiterate that point. Also, the STAR program, that's not a district program. Often, when the school year starts, I receive inquiries about STAR. Those inquiries are not best directed at the district. Those inquiries are best directed to the state. It's a state-run program. It's administered by the state, determined by the state, and the program will continue. But again, it's not the school district's purview to determine who's eligible for STAR and what that STAR amount will be. One thing, one thing that I'll just add, and I'll close on this, our district has been extraordinarily successful in every metric, regardless of the metric that you look at. I would argue that the district has been extraordinarily successful. I won't read the slides to you. I think they speak for themselves. Our instructional program is second to none. We've achieved every accolade that there is, but the greatest success comes from the success of our students. And I do believe that this budget puts student success and what's best for students at the forefront. We have terrific, terrific programs, terrific services that support the needs of all learners, and I'm proud of the results that our students have achieved. There, when we talked about co-curricular and athletics, we talked about there being something for everyone in our middle school and high school. We have eighty-eight co-curricular clubs between the middle school and high school, sixty-nine athletic teams, and that number's ready to climb next year, should this budget be adopted and passed. Great programs, great things happening in the schools, recognitions and accolades for the great things happening, and I'm hoping that we can continue the positive momentum that we're building, that we have built. And so I'll just close with sharing information about the budget vote and trustee election. French Hill is where the budget vote will take place, May twenty-first, seven a.m. to nine p.m. We encourage all registered voters to come out and vote. If you'd like to obtain information about the, either an absentee ballot, or an early mail vote ballot, or registering to vote, I would encourage you to contact our district clerk, Yvette Segal. Her email is Ysegal, Y-S-E-G-A-L, at Yorktown.org, and she'll be quite helpful to you in that process. So you're welcome to contact our district clerk. Even any questions about the election and the trustee vote, you're welcome to contact Ms. Segal. So at this point, that concludes the presentation that I have, and the addendum specifically. The original budget presentation is also included in public content for board docs, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Pete, I'm sure the board has lots of questions. Pete, do you want to start?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Hatter, for the update. The additional classes that you just talked about, those two weren't in your original budget. The Mohansick and the Brookside, third grade and second grade. That's new, correct?
The Mohansick, I believe we did factor in a contingency position for that, because we had the data earlier. With the third grade at Brookside, that was not factored into the original proposal. It now is factored into the proposal.
So you talked about contingency money and state aid to fund the Brookside. What if the state aid doesn't come through? Where does the money come from?
We'll have to look at other areas. And again, and I appreciate you asking that question, because I think that's a great question to ask.
because I think that's a great question to ask. We would have to, again, reprioritize. So, I'm not happy to lose the fuel oil contingency because my job is to make sure the school district is prepared for some of the unforeseen circumstances. And by having these contingencies in place, it assists us in being able to meet those demands. So, these past two years, we've had relatively warm winters. I can't tell you if the winter next year will be warm and we won't have to use fuel oil, but our job is to be prepared for it. But as I looked at fuel oil versus the needs of students and lowering class sizes, I'll put the needs of students before the contingency any day of the week. And so, we just have to look within the budget because at the end of the day, we have to fit within the constraints of our tax levy cap. So, it's prioritizing, it's making hard choices. They're not choices that I'm necessarily happy about, that they're not choices that I think are always... They're really difficult choices. But this choice to support the needs of our students would certainly outweigh some of the elements of our physical plant.
And what does those additional sections do to start up with class size?
So, as of right now, if, based on the numbers that I have, we have 125 students spread out over five sections, averaging about 25 per class. If we were to take 125 and divide that by six, that takes us to a number between 20 and 21.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm trying to figure out where to begin. So, I guess I'll ask a question. I have some comments, but I'll hold those for now. Jackie, we have to adopt this budget, we're scheduled to adopt this budget next Monday.
Correct. We're required to adopt it next Monday.
Well, that's what I wanted to understand. We have to adopt it seven days before we have a hearing. Is that what it is?
Lisa's got the details.
So, it has to be adopted before the property tax cap, I'm sorry, the property tax report card is due up to the state. We have another week. If we wanted to, if we wanted to push it a week, we could and still be in compliance. We had picked April 15, just because that's what we, that's the normal timetable. But if we needed to, or if the board wanted to, we could defer that decision a week.
And with April 22nd being the first night of Passover, we decided not to hold a meeting on that day.
Look, I would like to be able to do this next week. The problem is, we, this is a very difficult budget for us. We all understand that. I've been doing, I think this is my 18th or 19th budget. I mean, we are right up against every number you could possibly imagine. There is no, there's nowhere else to go, right? And today, the state budget was supposed to be completed. We got word yesterday, I think, that it wasn't going to be completed, and they're pushing for, I think, Thursday now. If it happens Thursday and we have the numbers, I'm okay with next Monday. But if we don't, I think we have to seriously consider not waiting for those numbers as long as we possibly can because we need every penny to make this happen. And we don't have the ability to increase the levy any higher than it already is. And it's something I never thought I'd say because we've consistently been well below whatever the allowable levy is, but we are really right up against it. So, I just want to put that out there because I think we need to consider it. Let's just see what happens this week with the numbers from the state. I guess the other question, Dr. Hatter, would be adding sections is great, and we want to bring class size down as much as possible, but where are those classes going to be? I mean, we're pretty much out of space in most of the elementary schools. So, what are we going to do?
Yeah. You're absolutely right in that point, that we are out of space. And so, we would look at moving some programs, whether it's music onto the stage, the way it is at Mohansick, or whether it's taking down some walls in some smaller spaces and relocating those to even smaller spaces, or subdividing rooms to put more services in a space. That's the reality. There aren't many other options at this point. Modulars are not an option at this point. Modular, the state ed approval process on a modular is not going to work because it's a 36-week lead time to get the SED approvals. It's architecture, it's design, it's HVAC, it's all of that stuff. So, we're going to have to think within the walls of our building, within the square footage of our building, and get creative to be able to add these sections. I do believe that the section is necessary. So, I'll start with that. And irrespective of what the state comes back with in terms of revenue, I still do believe this section is necessary. And it comes back to Pete's point, what else do we look at? And what else do we, I would say, sacrifice? Because there are no luxuries in this budget at this point. These are necessities in my estimation. But in terms of your original question about square footage and looking at where we house the spaces, it's us doing what we've done in each of the last three or four years. It's getting creative with spaces, putting up walls to subdivide spaces that are less than optimal. It's not ideal, but we were charged with servicing the students who are in our care and who are educating, and we'll make that happen. And if that means that we're going to put a program on the stage for a year until we can get some more time to have the buildings expanded, then that's what we're going to do.
Can I, I want to circle back to the modular because we have discussed modulators for many years during this whole process. And what we have been told is that the state ed frowns strongly upon modulators because they become permanent buildings. So, in order to put up a modular, they almost require it to become, all the reviews to become a permanent building. We've been told that that is really not an option for our buildings.
You're correct. But irrespective of that point, the process and the timeframe for a modular doesn't help us for September. It may help us for September of 26, I'm sorry, September of 25, but it's not going to help us for September 25.
But we've been told that they're not even, from what I remember from Aris telling us, Paul Tazi was telling us, that that's not even an option for us, which is the reason that we've gone down the other route. It's not that we haven't been aware that we have space issues and been trying to figure out other options. We've been told that the state is going to frown very strongly on trying to ease our problems by putting up modules even for a short period of time. It's, I don't want the community to think that we're just ignoring it. It's, we've been advised that it's not something that's feasible for us.
But we're going to do what we've done at Mohansick. We're going to do what we've done in all of the buildings at Brookside. We're going to create the best possible learning environment for our students. And if it means that we're temporarily putting a program on the stage, we're going to do that. If we can even have maybe two services share a space as opposed to individual spaces, we'll certainly look at that. But it's something that's not new to us. We've been prioritizing space and reconfiguring space since I've gotten here, and that's been one of the realities each summer for us, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Continuing the conversation from Pete and Mike, this is, what could happen ideally, and I'm not saying it would, but I think we leave in your hands sometimes the possibility of if we have a sudden influx of students or class sizes change, things could change between now and the opening of school in the fall. I mean, I know we project our, have our kindergarten numbers, but if things change, it could happen that within the confines of this budget, class sizes, not class sizes, but classes could be added, but that has happened in the past. Am I right? That we approve a budget, but between now and, you know, basically September 1st, you can always, we leave it to you that you could change as needs change so that we can service our students. Is that right?
Absolutely. My first year here, which was hard to believe now, back in 2017, we had 64 new students come into the district that summer. So, it's like, welcome to Yorktown. You have 64 new students that you have to place. And it was a great, great thing for us, absolutely great. But it certainly was challenging, but we were able to adapt and pivot to ensure that class size is maintained within Board of Education guidelines and that students' needs were being met. And so, yes, you do entrust that responsibility to me, and that's honestly, we spent a large part of our summer looking at enrollment, looking at class sizes, looking at programs, services, and trying to put them all together to ensure that we're meeting the needs of every one of our students. And if that means we have to add a section over the summer, we'll do that. Or if it means that we're hiring another clinician or another speech pathologist or whatever the service may be, we are doing that. In terms of the budget mechanism to do that, it's going to be obviously the work of me and Lisa and Deirdre to bring forward some options for us. Here's what we're proposing. So, this evening, similar to this evening, I'm proposing that we take some of the state aid, we take some of the contingency money and allocate that toward another section. And yes, you're right, it's a very dynamic, fluid situation. It's possible that next week I'm here and we're looking at another class, or that in July or August, we're looking at an influx of students, and we have to pivot at that point. And so, that's, believe it or not, that's a big part of our summer, is looking at student enrollment, student needs, and making sure that we're able to meet those.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm going to stay on it too because it's a concern. Our budget normally, when it's, even though it's tight, we've always had a couple of teaching contingency positions in it. I know that we had to take them out this year because of how tight we are. And I worry about taking from the oil contingency and the other, because I know last year, maybe we didn't use the oil contingency, but I remember money going into the diesel fuel contingency for the buses because some of those funds have to be transferred into other line items to pay our bills. And so, this is very, very tight. It's very concerning how tight it is.
It is. We don't have contingencies built in. There are no contingencies built in. We don't have the room with all of the, when I go back to the slide with the red circles, those red circles amount to more than what our tax levy increase is. It's some very creative solutions that we've come up with that have allowed us to still be able to offer new programs, not decrease services and staff in our district, and still meet the needs of our students. I assure you, those numbers, if we add those up, and I rattled off some of those numbers just quickly, but as we look at each of those numbers, TRS and ERS is $450,000 together, health insurance is $600,000, bus transportation increase is $485,000. We look at some of the federal COVID monies that are expiring and the salaries that are encumbered in that amount. Our levy is about $1.6 million is what we're able to increase in the levy. I assure you that if we add all these up, it's higher than $1.6 million. But we still have to look at it from the perspective of not just looking at the external environmental factors and the inflationary reality that we're facing, but how do we meet the needs of our students at the same time, and be sensitive to taxpayers. So, it's a very delicate balance that we're striking. I do believe that, yes, these contingencies are important because when you don't have them, you're looking at other programming to cover fuel costs because by state regulation, classrooms have to be at 65 degrees in the winter. They cannot be lower than 65 degrees. That's a requirement, and that's something that we always take very seriously, to make sure that we're meeting the minimum temperature, and we exceed that. So, I get that part. I really do. And your points are so well-stated and make so much sense. At this point, I would tell you that we have the opportunity, and I know this board has been so terrific in supporting services for our students and supporting class sizes and supporting opportunities for our students. And so, I think we're all saying the same thing, that this is a really difficult budget to piece together. In the end, we're going to prioritize the needs of our students first. And as we face circumstances that may challenge our budget, we're going to adapt to them, whether it's enrollment or whether it's a really cold winter or a very snowy winter. We'll find within. If it means we're foregoing a project at some point, if we're freezing spending early in the year, those are all options that we can look at, and we have looked at. These are things that we have done in prior years. But yeah, this is, make no mistake, and you all said this correctly, this is a really, really challenging budget to present to you and certainly for you to adopt and consider. But I do believe that in terms of the reality, because there are realities, and those realities, whether they're unfunded or underfunded mandates, are what they are. But to be able to do what we're doing in terms of adding to our performance music program, which is so important to so many students, adding to our athletic program and expanding it down to the middle school, that's really exciting. Being able to add some sections that can lower class sizes in both of our elementary schools are really exciting opportunities. Science at our middle school, to really take our engineering program, which has been so beautiful, it's been so amazing at the high school level, and push that down into the middle school to create more opportunities there, all while strengthening security, school security and network infrastructure, I think is really important to do. And I think we're able to do that in the budget that you have. And I get it, there are going to be some things that we can't forecast that are going to come up, and we'll certainly pivot to that.
I'm in agreement that you have to add those sections. They absolutely have to be added. I just hope there's not too many more that have to go in, but we'll have to deal with them as they come along. Pete, anything else? In the microphone.
Is the situation we're in unique to Yorktown? No?
No. In fact, I think you've heard in so many media outlets that there are districts that are facing multimillion-dollar deficits. There are districts all across the county. I'm in a group with 16 other superintendents in the Putnam Northern Westchester, and they're all experiencing some stress on their budget, a lot of stress on their budgets. There's a district considering in our immediate area, looking to go over the tax cap. There are districts that are facing mass reductions and mass layoffs and implications to programs. That's not us. That's not us. And I credit, honestly, the board for your management of the finances. You've done a tremendous job in managing the finances of the district. We're not there, and obviously, you're part of the reason why we're not there. I also want to thank our principals and Deirdre and Lisa and their teams because they've come up with creative solutions to some really complex problems and complex circumstances. So, as I mentioned, we could have just let the mandates dictate the budget, but we got creative in terms of some of the solutions. Looking at a hybrid performance music program and being able to turn that into an impact on three schools, I think is a creative solution to a real circumstance that we're experiencing on the ground. But no, it's not unique to Yorktown.
Can we talk a little bit about, I guess, how the levy is calculated and how it gets spread out amongst the taxpayers? Because there's been obviously a lot in the local news about potential new developments coming online and what that might mean in terms of additional students and some rumors of windfalls coming to us and whatnot. And I don't know if it's either yourself or Ms. Sanfilippo, could you just kind of speak to what that means in terms of how we calculate our levy and what it means for everybody in reality?
I'll start. I'll start, and then I'll ask Ms. Sanfilippo to speak to the calculation of the levy and the formula that's applied to that calculation. But with regard to some of the media reports that I actually came across myself, indicating that with some of the developments, the school district stands to gain, I think the number I heard was like $800,000, and it's just not true. It's factually inaccurate because the school district budget and levy is determined on a formula that Ms. Sanfilippo will speak to. That formula determines the levy. That levy doesn't change. If you have two new housing developments, 10 new commercial properties coming online, your levy is your levy. What those new properties will do will add to the tax base to distribute that levy across the different property parcels in town. So, it may lower an individual homeowner's property taxes, which is not a bad thing. That's a great thing. But the school doesn't see that money directly. Our levy is whatever the tax cap levy is calculated to be in that school year. So, any money that comes in from taxes of a residential or commercial development do not come to the school district. Our levy is unchanged, but it is spread across the other parcels, which will have an impact on those parcels. So, I just wanted to clarify that because I did find that comment that I read and heard to be, number one, inaccurate, and also a little misleading, that the school district would directly benefit from developments in town. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And I'll further clarify that. We're going to put out a budget letter, which we do every year, and that might be one of the points that we'll clarify in the letter. We'll also include that in our FAQ that we'll post online, just to make sure that the community has that information because I've seen it reported on more than one media outlet, and I think it's important for the community to know that, yes, developments are what they are, but there's no direct impact to giving the school district additional money. So, that's just, that's the fact. Lisa, do you want to speak to how the levy is determined?
So, the tax levy is determined and limited by the tax cap formula, which was put into place, I think it was 2012 was the first year that the governor instituted the tax cap. And the formula just takes into some factors, a tax base growth factor, which does account for some growth in your community, although it is usually on a two- or three-year lag. So, if you do have significant growth, you won't see that in your tax cap calculation for a few years. So, that it also then takes into your capital expenditures, any pilots if you have, pilots in your district, and some other factors. And through this formula, you come up with your maximum allowable tax levy. So, regardless of any other developments or changes in your tax base, that's already not captured through the formula. That doesn't impact your levy. Your levy is your levy. And like Dr. Hatter described, that levy is then allocated among all the taxpayers and all the different municipal... in all the different municipalities, again, which could vary based on your assessments in each municipality between Yorktown and Newcastle and Cortland. They all have different ways of assessing. So, that also impacts your share of how much of the tax levy gets allocated to your town. So, there are many factors that do go into determining the final tax rate that you'll pay. But regardless of your tax base, that numerator doesn't change. That's determined by the tax levy cap formula. It's the other items in the denominator that determine how much you actually pay as a citizen.
Just a follow-up, Lisa. So, if new students come in as a result of a new development, in a couple of years, that growth factor, that's part of the growth factor, that would maybe catch up with it?
Perhaps, right. That was the intent of the growth factor, right? That is really to capture brick-and-mortar changes to your assessments, right? So, new buildings, new commercial and residential is all part of that factor. It is, like you said, it's on a lag, but that is the design to allow you to grow your levy to accommodate for that. And sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't necessarily take into full account what comes to the district.
To further add to that, the formula, when we talk about the growth factor, is not going to cover the per pupil expenditure of the number of students that we gain from any development. Right now, the numbers that I've been provided on developments is that for every 10 units that are built, we'll get one child. So, for every 10 units built in town, our enrollment will increase by one student. I, it's a widely-used metric with demographers. It's based out of Rutgers University from the 1980s. It has held. It's actually accepted. I personally think that if you build 10 units in the town of Yorktown, you will get more than one student. I don't know how many, but I think you'll get more than one. So, will, I don't think that the aid that we receive through the levy or the increase in the levy will offset the student enrollment costs that will result. So, just to further clarify that point.
Just to take that a step further, if, as in the example you gave earlier, when we had 64 or 65 kindergarten students a number of years ago show up.
It was all spread throughout the district, so 64 students.
64 new students. There's no immediate increase in our budget to accommodate that, right?
Correct.
We now have 64 new students. We have to put them in there. We're happy to educate them, but we don't receive any additional funding to educate those students until potentially, a few years down the road, we might get a little bit extra. But that's the challenges that we face, and it's particularly daunting in a year like this, where we have no contingencies, we don't have a lot, you know, set in the budget that we can move around, really. And that's, to me, that's the biggest concern that I have right now with budget.
Right. I was just gonna add, the, again, the increase in the tax base growth factor is only from new construction, right? So, if enrollment is increasing because of turnover of houses, nothing in your tax base really has changed. It's just, you have new students coming to the district. So, that wouldn't impact your tax levy at all.
Okay. Cheryl?
Okay.
Something happy, maybe?
Changing it up a little bit. I'm looking at one of your slides talking about language, new language offering. I'm excited to see American Sign Language there. Could you just give us an overview of the language offerings that will be at the middle school and the high school for next year? So, if anything's dropping off, what's, obviously, American Sign Language is being added, but where we're at with all of our offerings?
Sure. So, I'll start. Ms. Amerling can fill in, anything that I leave out. We have a three-language program that we offer. So, it's Italian, Spanish, and French are the three languages that we offer. French enrollment, over the years, has seen a decline, and it's more pronounced and more prominent at the upper levels of French. So, what we did was looked at, is French something that's viable moving forward? We're seeing a reduction in French for next year, based on student enrollment, just purely based on student interest and enrollment, we're seeing a reduction. And so, what we're looking for is just an eye toward the future. Is there anything additional that we can offer? So, we did conduct a survey of students and families to just determine what other languages would be interesting for students to study. And we noticed that American Sign Language was at the top of that list. And so, we're looking to start off an American Sign Language program. It will not be a full-blown sequence at this point, but we're looking to introduce it for next year, see if we can build enrollment, and then expand that program up through all the grades. But Ms. Amerling, do you want to add anything? Did I leave anything out?
I believe you, that you covered it, Dr. Hatter. I do believe that there is a great interest at the high school for this. There was, the survey that was conducted for the current sixth graders yielded a high level of interest to full sections. And that wasn't, not even everybody responding to the survey, but two full sections of students, almost equivalent, maybe even a little more so, than the current interest in Italian. So, it just is something that I think is out there. It's different. It gives kids the same opportunity for understanding another culture. It's a different culture. It's the deaf culture. But it gives kids the opportunity for using a language that they can use into beyond their years here into the workforce. It's one of the languages that you see the greatest request for translation services. There's not really the app for that. So, it's something that is really up and coming in the workplace as a field that technology isn't really quite keeping up with in the same way that you would see in other languages. So, it is something that is exciting, and as Dr. Hatter shared, the decrease, the significant decrease that we're seeing in French actually makes it challenging for those students. When you have maybe only four students at a high school level, you can't really offer multiple sections throughout the day for them to go to. And that forces, if their language can only be offered at a specific period of the day, then sometimes it puts them out of the opportunity to take something else, because it's forced into their program. So, we're hoping that this is something that we can see grow, middle to high school. But it is something that we're always going to determine what the student interest is.
Great. And those two sections will be available in seventh grade? Where are we adding those?
We're still finalizing where they would fit, but we do believe that seventh grade would have a piece of the sections that we offer.
And typically, sixth grade, they get the introduction through core, right? Or, right, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Can we talk a little bit about this FlexPath program? I know it's an exciting program. It's put in place not just to help our students, but it's also going to help potentially not send students out of district at a very high cost. Can you explain a little bit more about it?
Of course, yeah. There are, as of right now, we have identified, potentially, 16 students who would qualify for an out-of-district placement based on the profile of a FlexPath program. Now, not all the students attend the high school, but most do. And so, the cost of an out-of-district placement is approximately $80,000. And we shared this. I'm not sharing anything new with our community and with the board. We shared, but I think it's important for the community to hear this again, because FlexPath is a really exciting opportunity for us. So, with every student who we send to an out-of-district placement, it's approximately an $80,000 cost with transportation as well. So, with the FlexPath program, we can service students, first of all, most importantly, in their own home district, with their peers on campus. And that's an exciting opportunity for us and for any school district to be able to do that. And then, when we look at it from the revenue side, the cost of implementing the program are going to be offset by the cost of keeping students in district. And so, in this year, in year one alone, I don't believe that there will be a negative financial impact on our budget or a deficit in terms of operating the program. And I do believe that it'll actually be a cost-saving measure for us in subsequent years as more students qualify and graduate into the program. But the reality is, we want to keep students in our district if we can. And FlexPath is a unique opportunity, because it takes the alternative setting with a therapeutic setting and puts the two together. And we have students in our district who meet that profile and who would benefit from a program that is comprised of clinicians, special education teachers, teaching assistants, an administrator to oversee the program. And the costs of those personnel, resources, furniture are actually offset by the cost of sending students out of district. And not just are they offset, but there's the potential of having some savings through the FlexPath program. So, we're excited by the prospect of, number one, keeping more students in our district as opposed to sending students out of district. And number two, creating a program like this that other districts can look at as a model and perhaps emulate in, across the region. It's an exciting opportunity. I think Ms. Almeida, Director of PPS and her team, for their creativity, their collaboration with the high school, with the clinicians, the administration of the high school, and bringing this idea to me. And once our team saw it, we were on board right away. We thought it made perfect sense. And so, FlexPath, we're looking to begin this coming school year. Again, we're out of space at the high school, so we're looking at the high school campus at a more macro level, as opposed to just in the high school footprint. So, we're still working on how the space will look and what the implications of the space reconfiguration will be. But we're optimistic that we can have everything ready to go before school reopens in September.
So, when we look at that line item of the $600-plus thousand, it's a direct offset from the outplacement item?
Tuition, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I just, so the 16 students you identified are in district that would go out?
Potentially, potentially. Those CSEs have not happened yet, but the profile of the student would suggest that an out-of-district placement is possible. With regard to the 16, they're not all at the high school, so I do want to clarify that point. So, not all 16 students would qualify for the program. But our break-even point's at eight students, and we do believe that eight students would qualify for the program.
Are there any students that are out of district that would come back?
Yes. Yorktown students who are currently out of school district who may return, yes. That's the, and the next part of that question might be, can we take out-of-district students in? And that part, we're not prepared to.
No, no, actually, I was wondering how many, you mentioned about where you're gonna put them. And how does that, where do you find the space? What's the delta above what we have today? Meaning, is it 10 more students that we have to find room for, or is it two?
No, so irrespective, we want to build the program for where we're going, not for where we are now. So, where we do believe, we have the capacity to serve as 14 to 16 students in the program. We're gonna build for 14 to 16. So, we've identified some space options. I don't want to speak too prematurely, because not everybody may realize that their offices are getting moved. I don't want to speak prematurely with the options before having those conversations with staff. But we're optimistic we'll be able to find the space. But we don't want to build for two students or four or six. We want to build to our capacity, because based on the trajectory that we're seeing of the program and the potential, not just with students who are currently in the district who have needs that would have warranted an out-of-district, but students who are currently outplaced, who now may be able to come back into the district. So, we do believe that we'll get to that capacity in a few years.
Did you have another question? Mike?
I love the talk about American Sign Language, and I think that's terrific. And pardon my ignorance, if we implement American Sign Language, does that meet the students' needs for a language? It's a direct replacement for whatever they're?
It does. It meets all the requirements as required by New York State. And it's also recognized by the colleges as a language that they accept for incoming students.
Cheryl?
I'm all set. Thank you.
You're all set? I'm all set. You all set? Thank you. This is tough. I don't know how we're gonna manage it. Lisa, good luck to you next year. And then, Mike, what is, you want to discuss, how are we gonna make a determination? We have a board meeting set for next Monday.
We'll have to, I mean, what we saw today is they're hoping to have this finalized Thursday, am I right? So, Friday, we'll see, you know. If it's not, then we have to maybe have a conversation at the next meeting about whether we want to push it or not, that's all.
Okay, so we're still gonna have the next meeting. We're just going to determine whether we adopt the budget or not, or we have a special meeting in which to do it?
I think, I mean, I don't.
I just worry that that's a holiday for some people.
I get it, but, you know, I'd rather get it right than push something through and then find out later that we, you know, we're in a bind, because we don't have all the data. We could talk about it, but.
Okay, well, we'll.
Let's see where we are on Thursday.
Yeah, save it for discussion, yeah.
From Monday night, okay.
Yeah.
We may be adding that to the agenda event. Okay, all right. So, we're up to personnel.
Can I just finish up?
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
No, go right ahead.
So, I just wanted to, first of all, welcome our families back. So, most of you will watch this tomorrow morning. We'll have it posted online. Wanted to welcome families back. We had an interesting spring break. I hope you had an enjoyable spring break with your families between the flooding rain, the snow Thursday morning, the earthquake Friday. There was a main breaker that went in this building over the week. We had some week here, and the eclipse that we were preparing for on Monday. So, it was a very interesting week for us. But I did want to share that we assessed all of our buildings after the earthquake. Everything was fine. There were no concerns, but we certainly did that assessment of our buildings. The solar eclipse was today. It was great to be at all the schools. We, like most school districts in Westchester County, we did not early dismiss, nor was there a need to early dismiss. And I think once the solar eclipse passed, I got two reactions from the students. The, one was, that was cool. Number two was, is that it? Is that all? I thought it was gonna get really dark. I thought the birds would start flying around. So, we had some students who really had mixed reactions. They loved the glasses. They loved the experience. We had hundreds of students stay after in our middle school. We had about 250 students, and I provided them with a choice of chocolate chip cookies or nonfat frozen yogurt. So, they enjoyed that opportunity. They had the glasses. We had, Cronpon and all of the schools did a viewing outside, and the students were holding up the glasses, looking at the gradual change over time. And it was exciting, and then, I think they were waiting. The students were waiting for this big finale, and that finale never came. And it felt like Times Square on New Year's Eve, that once the confetti drops and the ball drops, everybody disappear. Okay, that was great. We're back. I just want to thank Mr. Miller in the back there, because it was through his innovative I-grant and his efforts that we were able to secure the glasses and him being proactive. So, I just want to thank Mr. Miller on camera and here in front of the board, because it was a heavy lift, and we ordered to the number. And it's amazing how challenging that can be to order to the number. But we didn't want to have any extra glasses. We're gonna look at maybe even collecting optionally. If anybody wants to turn their glasses in, and maybe we can send those abroad to countries that might benefit or locations that might benefit from having the glasses. So, anyone who's interested in turning their glasses back in, we'll create a mechanism to collect those. But again, thank you to Mr. Miller. Thank you to our principals, our teachers. They all did such a great job in embracing this. There were, there were plenty of opportunities to dismiss early, not have to deal with it, send students home. That wasn't our approach. We leaned into this. And we leaned into it in a beautiful way, starting at 8:00 AM this morning, when we sent over 100 students on a bus to the path of totality. And that was an experience that I don't think our students will ever forget. That was exciting. Our middle school had a viewing party. It was just so nice to bring students together. There's so many things that don't bring us together, but to have an event that we could use to bring us together was exciting. Cronpon was amazing. I had the opportunity to visit Cronpon, Mohansik. I wanted to show you a video. I'll send it to the board either later on tonight or tomorrow. It was a great, great event for our school district, and just, I'm so grateful to everyone for their leadership, from Ms. Amerling all the way through the instructional leaders in our district. Finally, I just wanted to share, pre-K and kindergarten registration are open. Although we don't have the state aid numbers finalized, we do want to give families the opportunity to register for pre-K. We understand that planning and deposits are due at daycares and all kinds of different logistical considerations for families. So, we want to be sensitive to that. We opened our registration. Registration's going really, really well. I don't have an exact number that's current, but we had, I want to say, over 120 people registered in the first day that we opened registration. So, that's an exciting development for us, and we're happy to provide the service to our community. But more to come on pre-K registration. But it is open. It was in an email that I sent a few weeks back. Kindergarten registration is open. Again, we make so many of our enrollment, our staffing decisions based on enrollment. So, the more information we have is really helpful to us. So, if you're home and you haven't registered your child for kindergarten, please do so. Please do so as quickly as you can, so that it'll help us in our budget development process. But other than that, I appreciate the opportunity to provide you the update and to provide these additional updates.
So, can I ask two quick questions about pre-K? One, how many slots did the state give us this year?
188.
And then, can you explain the difference between pre-K and universal pre-K?
Yeah, I mean, the terms are used synonymously and used interchangeably. Ultimately, what our pre-K program is, is that anyone in Ultimately, what our pre-K program is, is that anyone in the school district who qualifies, and by qualifying for pre-K, the child has to be four years old by December 1st, 2024, and they must live within the Yorktown Central School District catchment area to qualify. We have 188 seats. The program's free from 9:00 to 2:00, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. If someone requires before care or after care, that's a fee that they can work out with the program provider, who is a YMCA of Central and Northern Westchester. The reality is, if we see more than 188 students, I don't anticipate that happening. We have 120 students in the program currently this year, and enrollment was high last year as well. We exceeded 188 based on enrollment, but 122 came to fruition. So we're extending the opportunity, similar to a universal pre-K program, where everyone who in the school district catchment area who wants access to the program will get it, will get it without a lottery system being implemented. If we do see enrollment numbers exceeding our seat allotment of 188, then we would have to implement a lottery system. I don't foresee that being the case. However, the program, now that we have a year under our belt, has really developed a strong reputation, and the feedback we've received has been exceptional. So I do think that a greater percentage of students eligible for the program will participate in the program, but those numbers will be determined in, in the months to come.
So when will parents know if their students get in or not?
So once the state budget is finalized?
Oh, good.
We'll be able to confirm the number of seats that we have. I anticipate it'll be 188, but once the state budget is finalized, we'll know for sure how many seats we have. And at that point, we'll close registration, or at some point in May, we'll close registration. I don't anticipate we'll have more than 188. And from there, once we close registration, we'll accept students until we fill our seats, and then at that point, the program's closed.
So is there somewhere on the website people can go to know when it, that it's open and when the date it closes? Because.
Yes, we have that, I believe, under the Good to Know section of our website.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are we done? We did our budget discussion, we did our updates, so we're done with that. We're going to go on to personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have volunteers and resignations, and under classified personnel, we have a civil service appointment.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. At Brookside, $1,290 for the second-grade excursion to the maritime aquarium from Brookside PTA, and at Mohansik, $28 for the kindergarten excursion to Stepping Stone Museum from the Mohansik PTA.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We're up to board comments. Cheryl, I'll start with you.
I just wanted to say to Dr. Hatter and our staff and Ms. Amerling and Mr. Miller, thank you for embracing the educational value of the eclipse today. It was a very tall task, when you speak of it now, hearing that we sent 100 students on a bus from the high school upstate. We had, it sounds like after school at the middle school, they gathered, and, and that was certainly, you know, very nice of our staff to host that. And then I know the elementary schools were out there and discussing the eclipse and making it an educational opportunity for our younger learners. So thank you for embracing it and making it a special day and allowing the students the flexibility to enjoy it in, in, in one of those methods. So we really appreciate that. So, yeah, it was, it sounds like it was a great day from what you're saying. Thank you. Mike?
Just echo Cheryl's thoughts, and once again, Dr. Hatter, thank you for, I know, I know you took some heat for not closing early and closing and all of that, but I think as we've come to learn over the years, you 99-point-something percent of the time make the right decision, and I think you did in this case as well. So thank you. I think the kids got maximum benefit out of it. Everybody was safe and sound, and learning, learning went on like it should. So thank you for that.
Pete?
Yep. And also, again, thank you for the budget presentation. I think that's one thing that can never be redundant, because I think it's important, the more you hear it, the more you truly understand it. One of the things I continually be impressed with is you and your team. When you look over the last 10 years, what the tax levy truly was, I was part of way, way back when 6%, 7%, 8% tax increases were the norm on a yearly basis. And what we've done, what you guys have done over the last 10 years has been excellent. So thank you very much to you and your team.
Yeah, I echo what Pete said. This budget is probably one of the toughest we've been through in a very long time, and it was just, a lot of things came together in a not-so-great way. So hopefully, we'll get good news from the governor, but appreciate all of your hard work, and we know that this is only the beginning, even after we adopt this budget, and hopefully it passes, and next year's, the management of it's going to be very difficult. So we appreciate that. Thank you for the eclipse, and also thank you for all the hard work you did last week because nobody realizes that when the middle school breaker went out, you were here almost every single day, trying to figure out how to get apart from South Carolina up here to get this building open on time. Nobody really understands. We do, because we get the emails and the texts, but we thank you for that, you know,